This is a lot of these extra meetings and really do appreciate it. I know Councilman Hendrick said that he couldn't be here and I'm appreciative of the four of you guys and coming in and everybody else from staff and all the departments and it's really cool. I'd like to turn it over to Vice Chairman Bowers for invocation and pledge.
My dear Lord, great heavenly Father, we come here today very thankful. Thankful for the position this county's in, thankful for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us, God. Just want to pray now that you be with us and give us wisdom and guidance as we work through this budget process, so that we can do the best for what is in your will for this county. We love you and we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, from under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all again. We had taken some questions from the last meeting that we had and I typed up what from my notes and sent those over to Mr. Wilson and in no particular order. You can start wherever you want to fill in some of those for us to talk about.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that we had discussed early on in the budget meetings was elected officials and appointed officials. They did not answer to the administration, so any of those officials that did not get what they asked for in the budget, they wanted to have asked to come before council and talk to you. One of those departments is our Veterans Affairs Office. They had asked for an administrative assistant, which is needed. I do feel the biggest problem is there's just not enough money to go around. But I've got Ms. Sherry Harris, the president of the Houghton. She wanted to present something to you. She actually gave you guys all a packet of information, which is in front of you in the brown folder, which goes over some of the things going on in her office. But Sherry?
Okay, thank you. First thing I want to say is thank you all for your support of the VA. And I just wanted to let you know that we are now making plans for our dinner and our parade is coming Veterans Day.
Well, that was awesome. That was absolutely awesome.
We have had many great comments and veterans are looking forward to again this year. So we have the dinner set for November the 9th. And we have the parade and the show will be on November the 10th. The parade will actually start at 3:00 this year instead of the 2:00 that we did last year to try and tie it up, make it a lot closer, so there's not such a gap between the two. And I've also had a request from some veterans very recently about having a town hall for them in Pickens County. So that's something else that I'm working on to get that tied up with the VA Medical Center in Columbia. And what I have done was just tried to put together some basic information to show the process of what is required of us to actually be able to do the job that we do for the veterans of Pickens County. When we're hired by the county, I'm actually elected. But we have to go through a two-day training in Columbia. We go through, once we go through the training, we're tested, we're certified or accredited, and then we have to do some federal application process. We have to be fingerprinted, all of that process to actually be able to do what we do. The VA also requires that we have, that we stay up to date in our training. We have regulations and stuff. There are a lot of things going on at the moment. They hit us with a lot of changes in October. In February of this year, they just hit us again. They changed the appeals process. So, and I also got, there's some legislation being signed in Columbia in the morning that I'm not going to get to go see what it's about. But it's just a constant ever-changing environment. The veterans' needs keep changing too. There is current legislation in Washington that looks like it may pass at some point in time for our Navy veterans or non-Navy veterans because there has been some question where they faced with any of the Agent Orange or did they come in contact with it. So there is some legislation. We're fixing to probably get hit with another magnitude of that, just like we did with the Camp Lejeune in 2017. So, and I have, in my packet, I have just give you an example of some of the forms that we deal with, for the most part, every day. And I've given you some information on all the agencies that we come in contact with, that we've worked with, with the Department of Veterans Affairs, both in Washington, also here in South Carolina, all the medical facilities and our local county agencies. We deal with those, the nursing homes, the funeral homes, the DMV, the Department of Revenue. I mean, there's just our senators, our congressmen, and the different agencies to provide the assistance to our veterans. One other thing that we have accomplished or was able to get this year is a medical transport van for, to transport a lot of our senior veterans. It is actually being sent down to Columbia tomorrow to get our new RAP on it. So hopefully we will have it, you know, ready to maybe have a possible news release media day for it. So we are, have worked hard as a team, I feel like. We spend a lot of, a lot of long hours on the telephone and it's become, the process has become to the point, with the many changes and the new forms that the VA has added, there were times where we might be able to do a claim in 30 minutes. Sometimes now the process can take an hour or sometimes up to two. We are attempting right now at something new that I've tried for this fiscal year. On Wednesdays and Fridays, we've made that our appointment days so that we can focus with those that are going to take a lot more time than those that just walk in, but we also have walk-ins those days too. So, it, and just alone in our database, I went in this afternoon and pulled some quick figures, we have over 8,000 in our system. And with our contacts, as far as people walking in and our telephone calls this month, and that's just the work days we've worked in the month of April, have been an average of 60.32 contacts made. And our main mission statement that is required of us is we assist our U.S. Armed Forces Veterans and their dependents in trying to get the federal and the state benefits that are necessary. That includes compensation, pension, hospital and nursing home care, burial insurance, education, home loan information. And then as far as the state side, we help with getting nursing home care. We work with those veterans who have been deemed 100% permanent and totally disabled with getting tax exemptions with the county and getting their special license plates if they qualify for those and for any benefits that their dependents may receive once they become that way. And just to top it all off, to show that we work hard and the veterans reap the benefits and also Pickens County reaps those benefits, but for, and this is just since I've been in office for fiscal year 2017 to 2018, and this is the only one, or ones that we have been notified of, over $1,161,192 in retroactive payments were paid to veterans. And then they will continue to get their monthly VA benefits also. And just for 2018 to 2019, and this is as of 3:00 this afternoon, is $1,166,608.74 has been paid in retro benefits to veterans just this fiscal year.
What they're asking for is for us to consider adding a part-time administrative assistant to the office, a cost of $19,632, and also upgrade. Ms. Harris is, right now I think she is a 20-hour employee. She's asking to be upgraded to a 29-hour employee. The cost to upgrade her from a 20-hour to 29-hour employee is about $15,269, should council decide they want to do that. We also, there's also another question you brought this afternoon for us that she'd like the council to consider is the training request. This year, they're going to need about $5,390, according to Ms. Harris, for training. What we recommended in this budget here is right at $3,000. So that would be an additional $2,390, should council consider, want to consider doing that. And I've got a copy of the request that she's asking for, and I'll share with council. I'll send an email out tomorrow with those. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Could you tell me again what the part-time employee cost is?
Yes, sir. There's actually a cheat sheet inside your budget book as well. The part-time employee Veterans Affairs costs $19,632.
And to upgrade her is?
And to upgrade her is 29, it costs $15,269.
That's for nine hours for her?
Yeah, per week, for 22 weeks.
And then plus an extra $15,000?
Correct.
For her nine hours, which is 20 hours.
May I interject here?
Yes, yes.
As far as myself, even if you were to upgrade me to a full-time individual, I do not require leave time, insurance, or any of those benefits. I take care of those myself. So that's another.
At 29 hours, it would still be considered part-time based on what they're asking for in the budget. So, thank you, Ms. Harris. Any questions, Ms. Harris?
I've got some input from some of the veterans. They think very highly of Ms. Harris.
I will say this. The office is always, I was talking about, the office is always full. There's a lot of things going on in the office, a lot of, a lot of people waiting to get in to see that. And this is one of those positions. I told Ralph, if this was a perfect world and money was available, I would love to fund this position. But unfortunately, this was a tight budget year. Presentable budget without a tax increase, we just didn't see how we could do that at this point in time. Naturally, if it's something to consider, we can figure ways to, what needs to be done to make it happen, I guess is the best way to put it. Thank you. Thank you all, sir.
Thank you so much. Really do appreciate you being here.
That's a lot of good information. I just can't do it while I go.
A lot of information.
It is. Real quick too, there was a question on this sheet right here. I'm going to get some real quick things.
Okay.
The chairman asked a question about our library cost and our out-of-county fee increases. It looked like, from what I can tell, and I had Ralph check this afternoon, our out-of-county fee has not really increased. It's been that way for some time. We just haven't, our budget book hasn't caught up with where we are. But when we talk about out-of-county fee increases, Anderson, Pickens, O'Conne, and Greenville, I'll have a, have a program in place where if I've got a Pickens County library card, I live in Anderson, and I don't want to go to Anderson, Greenville, O'Conne, I can do that. I can get a card at no charge. What's $25 out-of-county fee as far as somebody that wants to check out a book online and have it shipped, ebook or whatever the case may be, to Florence or Dorchester or whatever? We've got an ebook program somehow. And this is, I talked today to the interim director. Trey's got a question I can tell you.
It costs $25 a Sunday ebook?
That's what the card membership fee is.
So in case someone in Dorchester wants to check a book out of our library?
Yeah.
How often does this happen?
I didn't come up with this fee, councilwoman. Ralph didn't come up with the fee. This was submitted by the library board.
It costs nothing to check out a book, right?
No, no, it doesn't cost anything. To check out a book, but to get a membership card, if I live in Florence, Dorchester, Union North Carolina, or Washington State, and I want to get a Pickens County library card, it would cost me $25. If I live in Greenville, Anderson, O'Conne, or Pickens, and I've got a card in my, my home county, it costs absolutely nothing to get a library card. This is for people who live outside the boundary area.
So he just wants to put a $25 fee if anyone?
Yes. Come and find out. They've been charging this fee for some years.
Okay. So this is, I mean, how many times does it happen?
When I heard it, I didn't get down to red on that question, to be honest with you. That was a question we had last week, so I wanted to kind of update you on that. And let's see, I was trying to pick off a couple of quick ones.
Okay.
I've got Director Merk here. His should be fairly quick. Also, there was a question from council. If you want to step up to the table, Tyler. We've got Tyler Merk with us now. Really, really impressed with the job he's doing. We actually have turned my, he's turned Mile Creek Park around. We're actually making a revenue at Mile Creek Park now, which is a great thing. One of the questions that come up was, do we increase our fees for holidays? And I asked Tyler to research some surrounding areas, surrounding campgrounds, and see what other people do and come back with some information. So Tyler?
So big picture, I think, one thing we need to look at is dynamic pricing. It's, it's where the state system's going to. Reserve America's not ready to do it yet, but it's in the works. And so basically what that means, kind of like a hotel where it's based on availability. And so if there's three cabins rented, it's this price, and then as those cabins keep getting rented, that goes up exponentially. Same way with the Camp Cremoni though, that's, I think that's something to work towards. I think short-term, something in the nature of an increase of $5, because right now we go to three-night minimum. We could also look at doing a longer minimum around holiday weekends or the week associated with it. And that mostly is going to apply to your summer holidays, Easter, Memorial Day, Labor Day, 4th of July, and all those are our busiest summer holidays. I think there's several different directions we can go with it, but I think short-term, a simple $5 or, you know, a longer minimum state, potentially even moving into that dynamic system later on down the road. Looking at local counties, it's pretty much one set fee schedule, but state does the dynamic pricing.
We, Captain?
I would think with, probably we want to stay with three-day minimum because you could rent twice in the same week with a three-day minimum.
I, my personal thoughts on this, this is getting too much into us micromanaging.
I agree. That's a question. I agree.
We put you, you're in charge, and if you guys come up, if we have to make some sort of approval, I would rather have you guys figure out the best way to run it.
What our recommendation right now, if you want our recommendation, I can give you that tonight, fairly simple. We can make a fast nickel or slow down. Right now, things are going the right, and it sounds awful, but things are going in the right direction. We took, take a Mile Creek Park and we started here and we're here. You know, we're really early into the cabin process to start making changes, in my opinion. Let's, let's wait a season or two and see how things go.
I don't think it's our position to make.
I agree with you.
These, these understand where you're coming from, but that's, you're running the operations. We're setting the overall picture, and the overall picture is make that part work. And you've done that.
We can do that and we're going to keep rocking along. Right now, we'd make no changes.
It's, I mean, that's, it's my fault.
Y'all asked a question if we wanted to come back.
100%. This was, this was a question that was brought up last time and I've never asked it and I wrote it down.
We're on a fast nickel track and we'll see how things go.
I think the big concern, thinking back about this question, I think the big concern is we don't want to alienate any citizens or don't want to go back in backwards the way things used to be. We like the, the direction things are going. We just want to make sure that you're staying in line, but I agree 100%. That's his job is to make sure you're staying in line with what's going on around us, because obviously you don't want to be the outlier, one way or the other. You don't want to be charging way too much and you don't want to be charging way too little. You want to be, and I think you're doing a great job of that, to Councilman Lott's point.
This time next year, we might be able to give you a lot more data. We're, we're in our first season, so.
Excellent work that you're doing.
Thank you, Tyler.
The only problem I have is I haven't stayed in one of those cabins yet.
Y'all need to keep that in mind. All the holiday weekends, you gotta look.
Yeah, we're already pulling off summer holidays. So we got a little bit here and there, but they're going, they're going fast, so.
Thanks. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you, guys. Next, I'm going to ask Scotty. Y'all, this will take long, so I was getting some of the quick ones out of the way. And Scotty's actually got a fee schedule, possibly some information. Question come up last week, or week, whatever week we met, we met so many times, but are we covering our costs in Stormwater? And the simple answer is no or none. Scotty, actually, I'm going to let you jump in and talk about what you found and will we ever cover all of our costs? Probably not. I mean, but Scotty, jump in.
Well, I kind of gave you a little summary sheet on what our budget is now, a little bit of our revenue, and then the revenue that we get from Clemson University. And so you can see we have a big number there in red, a little bit of ways that we might offset some of that cost, just some recommendations. Let me back up a minute. I don't know if y'all all know what Stormwater's six-minute managers are. We're responsible for public education, public outreach, destruction site, post-construction, illicit discharge, which is our mapping and that kind of stuff, and then good housekeeping within us. So we actually do, y'all probably, have they gone through the MOUs?
We actually are most of the way through, a part of them.
So, so we do part of the programs by the City of Easely and we do their education. And then from Liberty and the City of Pickens, we do basically their whole program. If you'll see there, the fees collected from the Stormwater Utility, Easely collected, and I got these numbers from Ralph, last year, $339,000 from their utility. And then the City of Pickens collected $73,000. So that's kind of gives you an idea of what a utility can do if you wanted to go that route. The other route is, and you can see on my recommendations, is increasing the permit fees. The second page here, I've kind of given a breakdown of the surrounding areas and what their fees are. Pickens County's fees is basically the same as DEHAC. We charge $10 a disturbed acre, but we max out at the $2,000. Most, nobody else has that max fee that, you know, we can easily modify some of that. So I've kind of given a breakdown, like I said, of the surrounding communities and what they're charging. Anderson County has a base fee. It's an $850 fee, then plus $200 per disturbed acre. So there's some, there's a, there's a, it's not consistent, in other words. And everybody's doing a little bit something different. And I would definitely say we're on the low end of what we collect as far, and we definitely do not recoup our fees at a time and what we put in to do a plan review. And then the next, that third sheet is just a, basically a spreadsheet. It just kind of, I like looking at spreadsheets. It just kind of breaks out that same information. And then the last sheet I've got is kind of a breakdown of our, if we were to go with charging our municipalities based on the fitness services that we're doing for them. Like I said, easily, the only thing we do for them is education. I know this chart's a little bit complicated, but I've tried to break down what each column means. I kind of, I got with Anderson and how they do their fee services, and then Greenville, and everybody, again, does theirs a little bit different. But that would just be based on the, what we, the services we actually provide to the municipalities. And the City of Liberty does not have Stormwater Utility, but Pickens and Easely do.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just so I understand, you're telling me that Easely collects almost $340,000 in fees, and we do their Stormwater for them?
We do the education. We do education only. Now they have, they do their own plan review and inspection.
Okay. But we provide the education part?
Yes.
Which is, how much? Is that, is that $30,000 worth of?
For us to do it countywide, we partner with Caroline Clear, which is a part of the Clemson Extension, and it's about $2,000 a year.
So we're, we're bringing in like?
85,000.
85,000 dollars a year.
And 60 of that is from Clemson University for a position?
We're providing education for everybody else and they're bringing $340,000. Obviously, they're doing more, I'm guessing.
We just collect the money and send it to the city each month?
Right. Well, with their fees, they have a Stormwater Manager and they do plan review as well, but I would venture to guess they don't have as many projects as we do here in unincorporated Pickens County. But they also use some of that money for their drainage, and that's what that money's supposed to be going for, is upgrading some of, you know, replacing pipes. I know the City of Pickens does. That Cala Lily was one I know that I think they use some of that money to upgrade some of their drainage systems.
I think this goes with the same thing we just had, trying to figure out Stormwater fees.
Yeah, I agree. And we bring him back the information.
When you come back and say, you know what, this is what we, I, my, my perspective, we don't need to lose money doing this. We're not, it's not necessarily profit, and it's a service, but it should cover its own costs. And it should be on the people that we're doing the service for.
That's kind of what.
So the people that get the service, pay for the service, would be a natural inclination.
And Scotty's got a page here, I think it's the last page, actually. She's got some recommendations on what she recommended you start with. It's not going to cover 100% of your costs, but this is a good start. It'll get, if you want to, if you want to come back and review it for our next budget meeting, we'll come back with a formal proposal for you.
Personally, I'd say it's cover a call.
I think our MOUs that we're discussing, there's a lot of information in there that really plays an advantage.
Some of these costs will change. I know we changed some costs for Clemson or MOU, but some of that will change with the MOUs.
The goal will be able to have this be neutral.
Okay. Our next meeting, we'll have that ready for you. That one there. That was a question you guys had, want to bring the information back, 100% sure how you want to proceed. So Scotty, thank you for coming in tonight. Thanks, man.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, we're going to tackle some bigger ones now, I guess. We've got several on the, on the agenda, and I know Hagan Bill's going to take a little bit of time to go through the plan, the business plan they got for you. You all want to do that now? You want to tackle some more small ones first?
It's where we, wherever you want to go. I know that when we, when we get into contractual or personnel, I really don't want us talking about this in public forum. I want us to talk about that executive.
Yeah. Well, let's just jump down to Upstate Alliance next. I've talked to Ray Farley. Ray would have been here tonight. We actually are, are in the process tonight. Ray's talking to some potential clients in Pickens County, so he could not make it. It's understandable.
Maybe one of his staff members could make it tonight.
Actually, him and the lanes too that knows about this here, but I can probably give you a real good update on Upstate Alliance if you'd like to, and stay within our boundaries. Upstate Alliance, Ray does recommend we stay a member of Upstate Alliance. One of the things that we've noticed is being part of Upstate Alliance opens doors for us that we couldn't open without being a member of Upstate Alliance. It's, it's almost like a member, membership to a country club to an extent. We have seen a large increase in state grants and a Gibson Technologies just got a $500,000 state grant. We've got several projects this year, I think, all together, close to a million dollars worth of state grants. And now to keep in mind, the economy's booming, but some of these things weren't happening when we weren't a member of Upstate Alliance. Is that the reason? I don't know. It actually helps to be part of a regional partnership, paying for it. I know one of the, one of the big things that we wanted to, I was instructed to do this year is try to, try to come up with a balanced budget with no tax increase, which we did do. I know funding for Upstate Alliance is something that you guys probably wouldn't want to raise taxes to do. And if I bring you a problem or a possible project, we always try to bring a solution. We do have some funding available, but as you, as you recall, we actually passed a reimbursement resolution. There's approximately $550,000 something like that in that account right now. That account is and can be used for these types of projects, should council decide they want to be a member of Upstate Alliance. That money's laying there available to be used, the investment dollars we hadn't used none of them in a long time, so. I guess this falls to you guys, and I can bring Ray back at a later date if you'd like to talk to Ray too, this came up this afternoon.
When you first started there, you talked about being part of the country club. When I got on council four and a half years ago, Pickens County and one county and the lower part of the state, well, the only two counties in the state. lower part of the state, well, the only two counties of forty-six that were not part of an alliance. And I saw a big difference once we got part, to be part of the Upstate Alliance.
And we have had a, a good number of our, our existing businesses that have strongly encouraged us. I actually tried to go out and talk to lunch with several of them. And Mr. Warner, we go out once a month, and he's a very strong advocate. He was actually considering moving his business out of Pickens County two and a half years ago, for several reasons. With one was because that we were seen as shut off from the rest of the state. I think our business owners encourage us to be a part of that as well. This is a small fee for the services it brings to us. As a matter of fact, our director of economic development will be going on a trip next week with our Upstate Alliance partnership team. They're gonna be funded most of that trip. Will they give us fifty-five thousand dollars in cash, or whatever the number is, I'm not sure right off the top of my head. We'll probably never see that kind of cash coming back in hand to us, but there's a lot of things that they do offer. They offer vetting of projects. Project Gene is a good example of it, something they offer for us. Project Gene is a company that we, we hadn't brought to you guys yet, but they're in the process of vetting Project Gene. They're checking with different agencies, just to make sure, a little history and background. This is a council decision, not a staff decision, do you want to fund it or not? Staff does recommend that we consider funding for Upstate Alliance this year.
I know in the, when we had our county, our, our council coalition meeting that we just started, the next one's coming up, I guess, in mid-May, one of the things that we learned was how the other councils were really using Upstate Alliance and how we had not been taking full advantage. And it goes back to the, to me, to the, if I buy a membership to the gym and never go use it, I still own the membership, but I'm not really using it. So I think we learned a lot from that first meeting and sparked some ideas for, I think, Ray to take advantage of. I, Mr. Finkster, I'm like, I'm, I'm with you on this. I, I think that when, when we look at it now, all forty-six counties are a part of an alliance now, wherever they are. It's, I do think that by being a part of an alliance, it shows that we're willing to work together as a region. And I think that the state, I, I'm with you, Mr. Wilson, that I don't know that they necessarily, you can't prove that they're, they're helping because of it. But I don't know that they would necessarily not steer it in another direction if we weren't a part of it, for any new businesses coming in. My thoughts are to, to fund it.
I'll make some comments. I've been times when I, we were part of Upstate Alliance, times when we weren't part of Upstate Alliance. If there's something we're supposed to be getting that we're not getting, then I got a serious question for Ray Farley. Or I should say, you should have a serious question for Ray Farley, if we're finding out those benefits and we're not taking advantage of them. Because I've sat on this thing before, and we spent years with no results, you know? And, and when we were members, with no results. Now, right now, the comments booming, my question is, how many of our referrals come through Upstate Alliance? I don't think any, if I'm correct. Am I correct in that?
I can't answer that question off the top of my head. I'll be honest with you.
I would like Ray to answer, but I think my last conversation with Ray is, how many of these new companies came through Upstate Alliance?
Yes, I'm like you, I've seen that a lot.
And his answer was zero, I believe. And what we did in the past, is I know we're the outlier. And I think Pickens County is very unique, because unlike most counties in this state, we're actually very good at this machine. And, and past councils and this council have always acted in physically responsible ways. If they could show me where there's a justification where it makes sense, but you know, the times that we didn't have, we put four projects on here about before the last council, we weren't a member of Upstate Alliance. We took that fifty thousand dollars and we sent Ray to Germany. And Ray came back with companies. You know, we took the same money, we didn't, we didn't cut funding from it. We took that funding and reallocated it towards him to go develop stuff. And he did. So I, I've always questioned the Upstate Alliance, because what I see mostly happen is, we don't get anything, everything goes into helping the Greenbow's, Spartanburg. Now, there may be some stuff in the state. I'm, I'm not saying I don't know that, you know? And maybe the state commerce commission looks more favorably on grants. But before, before I came on council, the money for Upstate Alliance came from the businesses. The, the manufacturers in the county is what put the money in for Upstate Alliance. That has since been pushed on to county government and taxpayers. And so everyone's, everyone wants to do it when it's somebody else's money. But just a thought, and, and I would like to see Ray come back and-
We can have another budget work session, if I understand, so that's not a problem for him to be back.
Say, you know, I have a hard time with it. I've experienced inside, outside, inside, and-
I made some notes for Ray to answer on.
If I'm me, I, I think it's important that we all have a true understanding of what Upstate Alliance is. And I think that's a problem we all run into, is, and myself included, fully understanding and grasping. I think when we had that council coalition meeting, and when we went around the room and I listened to literally Oconee and Anderson and Greenville all say what they got from it, no one gets this exact same thing, because no one asked for the exact same thing. I'd say Oconee probably utilizes it the strongest of anybody. But they are not Ray Farley. They're not doing the job of Ray Farley. They are not economic developers. They are a tool for economic developers, whether it's going on this, these trips like, like Ray is gonna be in attendance to, whether it's these networking with the builders' guild groups, that they, they host these and they get you in front of the people you need to be in front of. They don't say, Aqua Fanta won't step in a bottling plant, we're gonna push that to Pickens County. It's, Aqua Fanta's gonna be, gonna have representation at this builders' guild, and we're inviting you to come to this. But it's, it's only Upstate Alliance members that are there, or whether it's vetting projects and developers and this, that, and the other, or even some of your, I don't know, your mapping and, and I don't want to get not like down into Scotty's role or Chris's role, but almost a, an additional tool for Scotty and Chris to even be able to use. That is what Upstate Alliance is about. It's, it is a consultant, if you will, but they are not economic developers.
And they're not lead gen.
They're more-
They are not lead gens.
They're not lead gens, but they're, they should be a specific extension, an arm of-
By the same token, if Ray says, hey, I'm looking for something to go in a specific area, and I can't come up with anything, that's where they can get involved. And I know they've done that with other areas, but just because the economic developer said, hey, I'm looking for some, some niche, something that, only thing that's gonna work right here. They can help you with that, but they are not your economic development department.
Well, that, that, they're a marketing company is what they are, essentially.
To, to a degree. Marketing and research.
So, um-
Research and marketing.
The question, well, the research that they generate, all that kind of stuff is readily accessible. I guess the question is, do we give fifty-five thousand dollars worth of marketing?
Do we? Or could we?
Well, if we could and we're not, and I got a question. Because we're investing it, and if we're not giving, if we're not, if we're not utilizing what we're paying for, the question should be why? And he may have a reason.
He may.
He may say, well, I can get better stuff over here. Well, and it may be, you know, but that's a question I would have. If you're telling me that you're hearing there's all this stuff out there that we're not taking advantage of.
Yeah, and to, to Councilman Bauer's point, when, when we went around the room and they all talked about it, everybody used Upstate Alliance in a different way. But none of them used it as a lead gen source. It was all used based on a kind of a, an extension of their own economic development department. And I still, I mean, I, I know that when, when we heard from Columbia, when we went down to SEAC, we talked to those, some of the folks down there, they're like, now that you're a part of Upstate Alliance, you're open for business, and we're, we're gonna push everything that we can to help, whether it be through the grants, or whether it be through the other funding. But I can't prove that because we're a part of Upstate Alliance, that's how Ipsen Technologies comes here with fifty-five jobs and nineteen, twenty-something million dollar investment and five hundred thousand.
That's one of the things to try to figure out, is-
Right.
Because if it makes sense, and it makes, if we say, hey, we can justify that money, and it makes sense, well, then, yeah.
I'm all about return on investment, right?
You know, I'll kind of look at it a little bit different. I don't think we probably give fifty-five thousand dollars worth a year. That's just my gut reaction, based on the guy that came here and talked to us from Upstate Alliance last year.
Yeah.
However, let's say we don't. But let's say we don't join. How much in monetary value does it hurt us? Does it hurt us when a company just come in, instead of steering them toward Pickens County, they steer them to Anderson, Spartanburg, or Greenville because it shouldn't be this way, it shouldn't be this way? But we all know, we live in the real world. Do they steer them to us if we're not being a part of the alliance?
Let me ask you a question. Just because remember, how do we know they're steering them to us?
We don't.
It's a horrible catch-22. I mean, you really, it's difficult to figure out.
So it's not a California way, because you don't know whether they're trying to, you know, you don't know.
We don't like it to dance if you're a pretty girl. It's pretty good chance that somebody steered towards you. Well, I, I say this, the times I've been down to training down there, and they, they put on the training for economic development, that was a big thing. Pickens County is now in the alliance, and they're a part of economic development in South Carolina. This is coming from state people. So whether, I don't like the system necessarily, but I just wonder, how much it would hurt us by not being in there? By not being in there, we're not part of the system that Commerce Department says. I mean, each one of these companies that comes in, they give incentives. What was the last one, what incentive they got?
Well, the one last week's five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand dollars they gave them incentive to come to Pickens County. Okay. We are not in that system, so they say, why don't you go to Anderson?
But that didn't come out of Upstate Alliance.
That's right, that's right.
It didn't. But, but it's the, it's the knowledge of, we are working.
I understand.
Can I ask a question, just for point of funding? This reimbursement resolution, remind me of it.
We actually collect, when the taxes come in, and Ralph may have jumped in, if I get it wrong, Nick and I talked about this morning, we actually collect, they passed a resolution. We give, we give Project Carl a hundred thousand dollars. I'm just saying, we give Project, I'm using, we give Project Carl a hundred thousand dollars. When that six percent tax revenue starts coming in, we collect our, our hundred thousand dollars before anybody else collects that portion of the tax. It goes into a special fund.
Where, where, when we make that decision on that field move, it affects the school.
Yeah.
It affects all those things.
Yeah.
Okay? And so what we're doing is because we're putting out first, we're putting together, we're paying ourselves first before-
At schools or-
So, to the point of that question, is that's where the funding is ought to come from anyway.
Yeah.
If we choose to fund it-
Yes.
You know, that's where it should come from, because-
Here's past with your general fund.
I think it ought to come from that account, because that's the count that-
Directly tied that kind of thing.
So, and like I said, it's about five hundred fifty thousand. That's a question you guys, one of the things you asked us last year after the budget's approved. I promised to council members that I would not put this in the budget. I would leave it on the table for discussion.
But here, here's the thing, if, if we got all these guys that approve it, and I'm not in favor of it, it's not gonna change anything anyway, so we can just move on with it, let them do it, and it's-
That's up to you guys.
Because then we can spend more time getting Ray and I to sit there and banter back and forth, but it's not gonna change anything.
I don't have a-
I'm, I'm realistic enough to realize-
I still would like to have a follow-up of Ray.
Yeah. And he will be at the next meeting.
But I, I, I understand.
Tonight was unexpected.
More than it has to be here.
Okay. Ray will be here. I've got notes on, on your questions. He'll be at the next meeting. I'm gonna move on down the list, I think, you want to hold personnel items till executive, there are a couple of those. Mobi reg, I'll jump on that one real quick. We had a question asked last time about liabilities, insurance, things like that, if we was to do a Mobi reg program. Our current insurance policy would cover, cover the, the program itself, as with anything else. You know, with more, more activities, there's more, there's more risk. But our policy covers those risks. There would be a insurance policy on the vehicle, which we've, we've identified a vehicle in the fleet right now. The cost is approximately four hundred dollars a year. Trailer's no, no cost as far as insurance goes on it, so.
It'd be the, the liability, I think whoever was asking, I know that my brain goes to the liability, somebody gets hurt-
Yes.
-playing on that equipment.
Yes, our policy would cover that, if it's, if it's our program, naturally, just like anything else. Anything we do, our litter blitz is a good example, employee gets hurt on a litter blitz, we're probably increasing our, our li, our, our, our risk. Well, with, with risk comes reward at the same time, but our cost upfront's four hundred dollars for insurance. Question is, do you want, if that's something you want to do or not, I don't know. It's, it's a council question. Did you ask about the insurance? We checked into it, we are covered. We have identified vehicles. Should you want to do this?
Did we figure out what the, the total cost of that would be?
I don't have a way to-
I think I know the vision you're going towards, something, something what Greenville has, if you'd like us to. We can try to generate some cost. I think you mentioned even some municipalities may have some. And one of the things you guys asked about was maybe, I think, Councilman Andrews, maybe, somebody said something about my notes, I noticed meetings with some municipalities, y'all want to have them at, at a meeting and talk about this, or?
Yeah, I mean, personally-
That was some of the notes I gave in the last meeting.
This going with the whole reg fund request and looking at directions and stuff there, I don't know that it's-
You know, the neat thing about-
I think it goes with that.
Yeah, this is not really something you have to decide in the budget.
Right.
Well, yeah, I don't hear a lot of it not, but this year, the funding, there's three hundred thousand dollars of recreation funding in the budget.
For next-
Fifty thousand per district. We got the eight and a half thousand for Powerwood Dexter, we got twelve thousand percent. That's general fund money already allocated, so it's not something you have to jump into tomorrow, if there's other bigger fish. But that was the questions you had about Mobi reg. We want to answer those questions, just to make sure we got you that information. Y'all are good with that. Any questions about Mobi reg, any more follow-up you want us to do, or?
I, I would appreciate it if you want to reach out and see what, what you can get on guestimates and this, that, and the other.
I see a special project for somebody here, Mark.
What about personnel costs? How much would it cost as far as personnel to operate?
And I may reach out to Councilman Bauer to make sure I understand his full vision. I know that I've heard several different things. One thing was, do we hire somebody full-time and have them stationed at Dexter, help Dexter do their program? I don't know. But we really need council's vision, I guess, when it comes to personnel. Is this gonna be a part-time person, is this gonna be a temporary employee? Is this gonna be a municipal person that picks the trailer up and utilizes? I guess we need vision from you guys on-
And I guess that's kind of where, if we see what are, what, what is working, because someone has got one up and running, they've learned a lot. Let's, let's see what we can learn from them.
I see a special project tomorrow. And we can have that ready, it's probably gonna take us about two weeks to get the information together, but we'll have that together. MOUs, we'll probably do an executive, that is a contract or- One of the questions that was asked here is about the padded seats at the former Arch Center.
I, I actually put this on there, and the reason I put it on there is because I, I try to go to all those events, and that's the big, big, big concern, that people say they can't sit there, and those seats are falling apart, and I know you're using duct tape and glue, or something similar to that. And I was just trying to figure out a way, how can we, because you had, and you had made[1767.63] had made a great point the last time that we were talking about it, the, the foundation should be able to help raise the money for that. Well, another way to do that would be go ahead and, and pull the trigger, pay for the seats, whatever the cost is, but Clemson University puts a dollar twenty-five per ticket bond fee on all of their tickets, whether it's, if somebody comes and rents the facility, it doesn't matter, it's a dollar and twenty-five cent on top of every ticket to help, so that all that money gets paid back. In other words, we pay for it and then through whatever sponsorships, if they sell nameplates on the seats, if they sell whatever, to get the money back in. So we've got that dollar twenty-five cent per ticket sale in place to recoup all of the cost. So get the, get them to do an RFP, figure out what the best price is, and then go from there. This is just a way for us to, a way for us to pay, pay for it, but get all the money back.
I think a dollar twenty-five, it may take all, all of years to pay that off.
It would take forever on just that. It's going to be in, you know, you go sell two hundred and fifty dollars a seat in, in memory of or in honor of.
Well, it's got to find, find some of the companies out here, you know, get, get this where the board comes in with creative ideas.
That's.
That's, that's, I get your point, but I think this falls in the line of, of, that's the whole point of the board, is to say, hey, can we get sponsorships or will a company donate twenty-five seats? And, and they can have their name on it and they can get, you know, a special day-long ticket. Some, some kind, some kind of figure out, an idea to have. That's what the board should be looking to do.
See, I'm, I'm agreeing with you on that. What I'm trying to do is say, let's, let's get it, get the seats in there so that people are enjoying them, because right now we've got people that are kind of on the, I don't know if I'm gonna come for something that's going to last longer than an hour, because it's killing my butt.
I understand what you're saying. You can't go buy the seats and then go to the foundation, hey, we want you to help us figure a way to pay for the seats, we just bought.
Well, no, you can.
You can.
That's why you put, you put the dollar twenty-five in place.
You can, but you might get better ideas if you don't.
And it may take another year to raise all that money. And now we've got a year's worth of shows where people are unhappy.
Well, if we had a year for the shows and got it all paid for right up front.
Right. But, I mean, you, again, you run the risk of you're trying to sell seats on an airplane, you're trying to get people to come in.
If you were to, if we were to tell you, pull the trigger today, go buy those seats, put them in there, when would they be?
October.
Council, one point, you can use the local accommodation fee money to pay for this if you wanted to. That's where it was originally going to be proposed to a payout of is one, one and a half, three.
How much have we got in that, in that forty percent?
We've got enough to cover, to pay for this. I mean, we generate about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year.
Let's do it. So that would be accommodation.
Yeah, it wouldn't be general.
What I'm saying is, because they still recoup the cost.
Can we recoup the cost?
What I would say is, yes, you could, but I, I wouldn't necessarily put it in accommodation fee money. Maybe you subsidize, subsidize that and put it in the general fund money.
What is passing, what is the accounting?
Right. If you want to do it, pay it out of the local accommodation fee. If you want to generate some revenue for the general fund, put the money that you ever, whatever you charge a dollar twenty-five per ticket at, uh, put that in the general fund and generate a little bit of money to offset some of your costs.
Board has raised some money, and they are wanting to put twenty-five thousand, according to what Jay told me. They, they want to put twenty-five thousand of the funds they raised.
How much is it going to cost to do it?
Uh, I think that's on your sheet, that's what you want to look at.
It's on the cap.
It's only like fifty-eight out of all this.
Yeah, it's a hundred and fifty-four five, but I think you were, that was your request, you've got them down to a hundred and thirty maybe, and you're going to get twenty-five?
I've gotten down a hundred and twenty-five thousand from a hundred and fifty-four.
So we could take a hundred thousand out of the thirty percent, a tax money?
Maybe the local money.
The local money.
Right, not the state money, but the local money.
But it's money we got sitting there.
And it'll be in next, this year's, but technically.
And then we don't have to mess with ticket prices or try to, you know, just, just, because that fits, and see, that goes back into our concept, at least my concept, and I think some of y'all agree with me, is I'd rather put that money into hard assets as opposed to for sure. Because then it turns every year.
Well, you see the value of it.
Pun intended.
Hard assets.
Yeah. If y'all want to do that, we can make, Ralph's making notes for you, while we're doing budget moving on the third reading.
I, I, I'm fine with that. I was just trying to figure out a way to get return on investment, but I like what you're saying absolutely that way. What do y'all think, Carl?
That sounds good. You guys asked for a kind of thing your own way.
We are. We're, we're paying our own way. With regards to the seats, the good news is, we're, we're starting to see a lot of repeats coming into the auditorium, um, and the funny part of that is, is they're bringing padded seats with, almost like a stadium seat. And so that, that's a good thing, because they're enjoying what we're doing, they're going to be our repeat customers. And as we continue to grow, we're nowhere near where we want to be yet. We've still got a year or two before we become a, a true entity, but yes, we are paying our own way and the shows we're bringing in are bigger and better than they, than I expected they would be at this point, and the fall count and the spring count is pretty strong, so.
Well, I agree with, with that.
Anybody been to a show recently? Those, those demo seats in front of the auditorium, have we got?
I've got a quick question, does it change the number of seats?
No. No, we're actually.
So it's the same space?
The, the way this company has come in and configured the seats is we probably will go back a little further, um, keeping in line with Fire Marshal and all of our requests, but, um, no, it doesn't. We'll still keep the same number of seats.
We'll have that as a possible. Okay, we'll make a note as a possible budget.
Thank you.
We have to spend that money for required by law.
That sounds great. Next on the list here, there's a, I'm getting to you, I've got, like, explorer county-wide scholarship for students who could win money, internships, PC pack, Hagan Mill Museum, Parks and Recreation. That was one of the things that we were asked to look into.
Again, that's something I put on there. Only reason I did that was because I saw, I got asked to sit on the SEAC, they pick a county, um, to fund a scholarship for. But, uh, Councilman Bowers had a good idea, I thought. I mean, I, I, I like the idea of, of getting, and I know we're not, we're not the school board, but I still like the idea of the county council being involved in the community and doing something for each of the high schools or, and you had made a suggestion of, go ahead, I'm not going to speak for you, with your mouth on whistle.
Go ahead.
Whistle.
Go ahead.
You were, you were saying, do, do, maybe do something on the lines of, um, the arts or has, or maybe has, it has something to do with Hagan Mill or the museum or the performing arts center. But just to, I, I just put it on there to explore possibilities. Not talking about a lot of money, what I originally thought was if we could do like a, a thousand dollars a high school or something for high school that the county council did and put together a scholarship committee, just like they do with the Association of Counties.
So when, when Chairman Costner and I were speaking about this, he pitched that idea and, and kind of the roll-off idea to that idea was, if you had three scholarships, one for the performing arts and obviously the PAC Foundation would be who you'd want to sponsor that, or the performing arts center, the arts, which would be the museum, would be the one that would sponsor that or do that, and then use the Hagan Mill for some kind of, there's, let's, let's be honest, what are we doing at Hagan Mill, other than the music? But the, the true intent of the mill was making grits, right? And that was the intent of the mill.
To provide heritage and cultural education.
No, I'm talking about the, the, the mill where they grind grits, the intent of the mill back in the day, before heritage and culture.
Not the whole thing, just the mill.
The, the original intent of that mill was to make grits, right?
And to provide the community a place to.
To be, right.
To do their performing.
So, so we have.
Have their assessments.
We had, um, metal, um, metal works out there, we've got the grits being made up there. There's all kinds of different things, right? So I was going with the whole hands-on approach out there, because I couldn't come up with anything else that fits the line for that to fit, so I thought, you know, that works. So that was a, a thought or an idea, spinoff if you will, so you could offer three, and then we talked about, do you do it for the whole county? I floated the idea out there. Do you pitch it to county employees, families first? You know, if there's a, and go through an application process. So if it is a direction that, that the rest of you guys would like to, to explore, that was kind of the idea and where we went with it and kind of where we stopped with it.
I just, I just thought it was one of the coolest things to be a part of that with the South Carolina Association of Counties. They had, I mean, they sent a book of the applications that they had narrowed down to the top, how many ever people, and it was a committee of people from across the state that read those, graded them, and then we got together to talk about who got awarded that scholarship. It's, yeah.
The only other thing, try and digest the concept.
Maybe, maybe it's a bad idea, I just, I wanted to.
I think the idea is great, I just, once again, my brain, it starts running off the rails.
Yeah. I, I know, I thought about that too.
And so it gets off into these things where they, all these associate, kind of take the monies that we put out and then they pick winners and losers based on what the applies for what scholarship. Now, the idea of scholarship, if you say, if anyone wants to do something, usually you have an endowment or something that tells, because if you pick, we're going to do a thousand dollar scholarship, okay? And everything's great, because the economy's going great, but what happens when we have a really tight budget? So you start looking to cut things.
We don't have it that year.
So, so, but usually these things to be perpetually.
Yeah, I agree.
They have a, a amount that the interest off of that creates the.
Creates the money, so you.
The money, and so what happens is, it's there forever. That's what Clemson does, it's endowment things, and it's always there, so it becomes something that's permanent. And then it's not something that's ever put on the burden of the taxpayers, but it would be so-and-so, if someone wants to create one for themselves, to say that the Carl Hudson Hagan Mill, you know, thing, so that he says, I'm going to put the money into it and then it becomes, that the county would be the ones that would administer it. Then, then you're administering it from a volunteer basis, it's not something that taxpayers are having to pay into, the government's not picking winners and losers on that, there's a foundation set up that we just help use our facilities, name it after, or tied into a new thing.
One reason why, in our conversation, I, I suggested that we work with our foundations, first three organizations, and that being who, well, I think it's a great idea, I agree, you got to look at the role of government, but we do have those three foundations in line, and if you look at what I believe our original intent was, was for those three foundations, that would be one hundred percent in line with, with what the original intent of the foundations was.
I'm trying to envision what the winner of the scholarship, with, with, what they would get from it.
Money?
Oh, good.
To go to school?
Oh, okay, just, okay.
I'm a fancy pin.
I thought you might, I thought you might be going to give a thousand dollar scholarship and have them come to the library and, or not the library, the museum, and work on some sort of display or something.
Internship's a great idea too, but it's one of those subjects.
With, with the, for you.
Yeah. Well, we don't have to spend a lot of time on it, I just wanted to, that was the whole intent of putting that on there, was that might be something for us to explore, but not necessarily part of this.
We'll jump over next, it's from here, it'll take probably ten, fifteen minutes, but we've got Hagan Mill. As everybody knows, we, in the budget package that you have before you, it does not fund third Saturdays or a position at Hagan Mill. And Director Crawford has been working closely with Ms. Beatty, the chairman of the Hagan Mill Foundation, on how the, how that they can come up with ways to, to fund our third Saturday events. Other events besides just third Saturday, how do we come up with a thing? How can they work as a team, fundraise, to find ways to pay for things that, that we as a group would like to see done at Hagan Mill? And with that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Director Billy Crawford to kind of make a presentation. He has a package in front, a pack in front of you with a business plan that him, Jim and Ms. Beatty has drafted up, goes over all the information, some black folders. And with that being said, Billy, your own deck.
Thank you, sir. Um, yes, you guys all have a black packet in front of you, it's got extra information for you guys to take home and look over as you have time. I promise we'll try to keep this short and sweet. But yes, we have been coming up with a, a new business plan, um, where we've been working with the Hagan Mill Foundation, we've been working with the administration, with the, you know, with the volunteers, staff, we've all come together to try to put forth an effective solution to some of the problems we've been having with finances and stuff out there, the mill and funding events. Basically, what we're trying to do is just smooth out the bumps that we've had put on the road over the past couple of years, using basically what is kind of an unsustainable fund or unsustainable plan. So that's what we got before you today. Before we jump into it real fast, I want you to think about other ways, Hagan Mill's not just about third Saturday events. Hagan Mill is going on pretty much every day of the week. We're working with civic and municipal organizations, Leadership Pickens, with the scouts, school groups, they're always out there coming and doing tours, learning about behind-the-scenes tourism stuff for Leadership Pickens. We're working with churches, we're working with Clemson Extension and with Scotty, and these folks are coming out and doing adopt-a-stream workshops, all sorts of things. So the site is used way more by lots of people in the community, more than just the third Saturday events that we're going to be talking about today. Again, bicycle groups come through all the time, every Friday from now through fall, you can come out there and see people from all over the country that come to this area to ride bicycles with the handicapped group and all these guys. So they're out there, there's lots of things going on. We're doing community service with the colleges and, and the career and technology students, so it's, it's a valuable site where people's getting a lot done, they're getting a lot of things from it. So it's, it's way more than just the third Saturday and financing and stuff like that. It is a, it's a spot for all the community to use in all sorts of various ways. There's probably a list, like the ones I just named, there's probably an equal list that I can't think of at the moment. But anyways, but just think about that, we have come together and we've tried to put together a sustainable plan that we hope that you guys will consider and, you know, and so with that said, I'll just move on to a couple of other things, Rex. So we'll move through this pretty fast. If you'll flip over in your packet, it starts out with Hagan Mill on the front, it goes to buy the numbers annually. The annual attendance at Hagan Mill is around thirty to thirty-four thousand, thirty to thirty-four thousand visitors a year. So in the Petri Lift site, we're at ten thousand eight hundred visitors this year, that's something that we know could increase, giving a little bit of improvements and upgrades to the facility out there with the gallery space and stuff like that. We have visitors from six of the seven continents, so the only continent that I know of that we haven't had anybody from was Antarctica. But other than that, we have visitors every year from all seven continents. We have over a hundred volunteers out at Hagan Mill now, which has increased with the foundation or outreach, uh, programs and stuff, but we have at the moment over seven thousand six hundred man-hours of volunteer service. And the recent study came out in April from the independentsector.org showing that the average now for volunteer hours is twenty-five dollars and forty-three cents per hour, which equates to roughly a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars of in-kind service, basically from the volunteers that go towards Hagan Mill and for Pickens County. So that's a number not to, not to forget whenever you go into some of these things, okay? So, um, just going through, I'll just highlight a couple of things about the foundation. We are being good stewards of, of the community and the funds that we generate, it's just been a thing that was kind of misunderstood and wasn't really sure exactly how the numbers worked and things like that. So what we're offering today is something that's easy math, something everybody can understand, a bottom-line scenario that, you know, that everybody sees right there in front of them, and something that we can all work with and be transparent with. But as far as Hagan Mill Foundation, we got a couple of, I mean, you can go home and read these things, but, um, that we've designed, implemented the Hagan Mill Foundation website, they've upped the volunteer base to, to over a hundred volunteers through the outreach efforts. They've helped organize field trips with local and out-of-state school districts, which you can see in your packets. We have information for you guys in there, showing what we send out to the school districts in there showing what we send out to the, uh, school districts and stuff throughout the state. Um, we've also developed, um, special events and rental plans for the mill sites, so folks can come out and rent it for other events, civic organizations, um, reunions and things like that. Um, so, uh, just take that home and look over it when you go to your other sessions, um, just wanted to remind you of those things. Um, and the things that the foundation's currently been working on, um, they've been assisting with every third Saturday event since we've, since it was created, we have board members out there helping at each and one, each and every one of these events. Um, again, you know, we've got the rentals and we've gone to the, the field trips where we're getting, Heygood Mill gets thousands of students and stuff from South Carolina, from this community coming through there every year. We've implemented and kind of stepped up our field trip offerings to give hands-on, um, workshops and programs for kids to go away where they actually are touching things, they're actually planting things, they're stringing beans, they're doing all these things and learning about Native American culture, so as opposed to just walking through the site and saying, here's this and here's that, they're getting immersed with these volunteers and some paid folks that come out, but they're doing a special niche type program for these kids, and it's really paying off, and lots of, uh, positive feedback on the, the things that's going on with that, with the field trips and stuff. Um, we just recently had the, uh, English as a second language, we had two groups come through where hardly anybody in the group spoke English, but they're in a labor-intensive or, you know, just intense learn English fast type program, and they love it, and so just things like that, we're outreach into all these types of folks. Um, and again, we are partnering more now than ever with Pickens County School Districts, Holly Springs Center, the YAM programs, the Ag Museum of South Carolina, and other traditional arts and organizations such as 4H and Clemson Extension and things like this. So we are, we're out there, we're in the community, we're a place for all these folks to come and enjoy, it is a place where you can learn many things, there's many different opportunities for many different studies out there, um, so that's what we're about out there as well. Um, some of the additional programming opportunities that we're wanting to go to help fund some of these things that we're going to be proposing for fiscal year 2020 is more workshops for adults, either in blacksmithing, hard cooking, uh, even milling and things like that. Um, our heritage pavilion that is up and going and coming along nicely, um, uh, we've planned on hosting dances or workshops or outdoor movies, we even got this new thing going with pickleball that, uh, these people were talking about, we were looking into it, but we offer these types of things out there. Um, the eco and agro tourism activities, um, with corn mazes and pumpkin patch and hay rides and stuff like that are on the way. Uh, those little things are some of the things that we would be asking counties assistance with, but for a small investment, I think we will have big returns in the future on some of these things. Um, again, we want to work more with the local universities and colleges to create summer internships and programs for these folks that can come out, that's doing outdoor recreation, that's doing architecture, you know, or construction, music, agriculture, any folks that, uh, involved in this type of study can come out at Heygood Mill, and it'd be a great place for them to learn and see, um, behind the scenes what's going on with the historic site, so there's a lot going on there. Uh, the family camping weekends and stuff that's, that we plan on having is another, uh, a great way to outreach to the public and, and to actually make some money from camping trips. Um, we want to increase our, our, like, uh, our demonstrations, like our cider press, we have some equipment out there that's in bad need of being restored, but it's there, the bones of them there, but with a little work, we can have our cider press going, we have a, we have basically a, uh, molasses mill and stuff like that for sorghum and, and pressing cane and making certain stuff like that, so just things like that that we want to outreach to draw more people in, these are things that could generate funds too. Um, also evening shade and concerts, uh, you know, happy hour type concerts out there going on throughout the year. Um, so, we'll flip over to the page, you guys can read some of that more at home, um, some of the things that the, uh, foundation, we've discussed, uh, they've discussed, um, some things that they would like to be, that they would be willing to be responsible for, um, would be some of our contract staff, um, currently we use a, a small staff of staffing agency employees through MAU, um, we were able to choose these employees, they are very good at what they do, but unfortunately, that's unsustainable at the moment, but we were wanting to try to reach out and get sponsorships and help, um, with these types of employees that's coming out temporary, things like that, because they are, they do provide a vast knowledge of the areas that they are, and they do need to be compensated, it's hard to get a volunteer to come out for three field trips a week, you know, so, uh, to keep things like that going, where we providing quality, you know, programs and stuff, uh, they do require a little bit of payment there, um, but, and, and the, the foundation has stepped up to that challenge to offer assistance with some of that as well. Um, the, like I said, the volunteers, we can never say enough about them, foundation would be basically, um, telling these guys and organizing these guys for the events and programs going on out there and overseeing that, um, planning and producing performers and, and all things like that. Um, so there's more down through there, uh, just, you know, we've already gone in and did some advertising and printing, and we have done grant writing, we've received some grants, um, for sure, we've applied for many more that we weren't just right there, um, at the top, we were very close, but, um, but we're, we never stopped, we're always there working, we are shaking that money tree, I promise you, every time we turn around for sponsorships, we are, we're out there talking about it, we're networking with folks, we're trying to get something started here, so just let you guys know, and, you know, we're doing our part, I promise you that. So, um, and some of the other responsibilities that we've had on, on, on this is, uh, paying half of the, um, site manager's salary, um, the administrator, I think, might be able to provide a few more details about that, and when we get to that, or at the proper time, but, uh, I think he had a, a, a plan that might, um, you know, meet some approval with you guys. Um, the, uh, foundation's also agreed to, you know, purchase all the products that we buy and sell in the gift shop, including the, the corn and the grits and everything that we use, um, for the mill and for third Saturday events. Um, again, let's see, uh, oh, funding, uh, special events, activities or fundraisers, and also assisting with advertising and promotional monies as well. We get to the back page, um, some of the things, like we just said, do require just a little bit of help from the county, um, but again, um, with this plan, with us knowing exactly where we are, where we need to be, you know, getting that, the accounts and everything straightened out to where it's understandable for everyone involved, that is, that is the key to this whole thing, and I tell you, we'll, we'll work with whatever you give us, and I promise you, we'll take this thing where you want it to be and where you want to see it go. Um, you'll see some of the, um, incomes that we've projected, um, through here, uh, and I don't know if you want me to go over it line by line, or if you would prefer to read it, but, uh, we are projecting to get some stuff, uh, some income from mill sales, admission fees, and you'll see those numbers that the, uh, that the foundation's come up with, um, some of them are a little lofty, but I think we will be able to do it there, uh, with grants and camping, the field trips and the extra activities such as the corn mazes, um, dances, uh, and different things that we've come up with for fiscal year 2020 as that goes. Um, one of the things that we're asking for, um, from the county is to, uh, help us offset some of the costs for the site manager's salary.
Tell them that's correct.
Yes, which is Chris, our gift shop manager slash site manager, he does a lot more than just the gift shop, I promise you that. Um, so, they're willing to offset some of the costs with that, I wasn't sure if ATAX money covers personnel or anything like that, but I would love that option if it was. Um, we'd like to get some of the funds possibly to help fund our third Saturday events from the ATAX, or I think the administrator had, might have some insight on that as well. Um, but we, with our other expenses, you'll see down through here, uh, we have a balance sheet that we see, um, from our income and our projected expenses. Uh, we just ask you please consider these things, um, as you go into your session and discussions over Heygood Mill. It is a jewel for our community, um, it needs to be funded, and, and I promise you, we will do our part to be good stewards and provide the quality, you know, education, everything that this site deserves and can be. Um, with that said, there are a few things that are uncalculable there that you can't calculate, right? And so, those things are what Heygood Mill really is. Um, it's hard to, I mean, I'm not sure what the impact is of these 30 something thousand visitors that come to the mill, they have an impact, and I'm sure on the local economy somewhere, so think about those calculations as you go into. Um, how do you calculate time being spent with your family out there, you know? Maybe sitting there with your grandfather, father, mother, this might be the last summer you get to spend with them. You, I mean, they had a great day of mental, how do you calculate that? That's what these things are about, you know, being able for a kid to discover something new, or an elder to remember something from his past, you know, that's, that's what this site is about. Having to meet Robert Perry, our old moonshiner, that experience itself, how do you calculate all the kids that's walked up to him and petted his opossums, or his goats, or his dog, blackjack, you know? Those things are things that impact the community, they impact that person, they impact us, I've seen these things since I've been there, and it's, it's amazing, it's great, it's smiles, it's laughter, it's friendships made, it's thousands and thousands of stories, dude, there's lots of stories, how do you calculate that? It's really hard. All the information that's shared throughout the year from these folks that have intimate knowledge of what they do, all these things that they share with people, it's hard to calculate that, right? There's one day that I'll never forget at the mill, and I was sitting there, and there was a 90-year-old man there, and we were having a concert, it was the Heart Strings, they played the old-timey, old-timey music, and he was sitting there, and we were having a great time, and at the end of this song, this man, he's 90 years old, I'll never forget it, and that's why I love working there, he stood up crying, thanking the musicians for what they did, he had a memory of a song that they played, he hadn't thought of in years, but it was a song his mother used to sing to him when he was a child, he was 90 years old, so that's the kind of things, as he's sitting there crying and joyous and just loving everything, that's what Heygood Mill is to folks. It is about collecting money and things like that for, you know, we want to take care of ourselves, we want to be self-sustaining, but that's the real value of this place. And after that concert, the guy's daughter comes up, she's in her 60s or 70s, and says, this is probably our last few months with Dad, I just want you to know how special our day was here. And so, that's the things that Heygood Mill, that's what we do. And we got a great group of people out there that are dedicated to the community, to family, to fund, to education, to all things positive. I just want you to realize that, that it's, it's, it's a lot more than the bottom line sometimes, so, I just want you guys to consider that as you go in and for this.
What this, uh, what this will be, well, two things, um, first off, we've been funding Heygood Mill for, for the last, probably like five to seven years around, a lot of your, your activities have been funded out of the Fund 50, this is an account that they've built up over time, and, and we've been taking funds out of that, that account and not replenishing it. What this does here, this, this is going, will change the way we do things a little bit, if the council does like this plan. Uh, one thing is we'd probably start charging some admission on our, at our events versus.
Ken, before you go any further, and I don't want to be a complete and total smart alec, but I'm going to be a complete and total smart alec, on this side, I, I see it one-sided, what does this plan require of the county? Because nowhere in there is what's required of the county in this plan.
Yeah, what, what the county would need to do is, is basically, they, they've come, and that's what we're kind of getting to right here, is they come up with, with a plan that, that continues things we're doing now, I, I do feel like that we've got to evaluate what we do to make sure that we're hitting the mark, kind of like Mile Creek Park, are you hitting your mark? I think we've got to evaluate, but, but at the same time, I think we got to continue something in some, some shape or fashion. What the county would need to do, if, if this plan was to be put into place, is, is we need to come up with $22,500 cash, the, the, uh, the board, Director Crawford, Director Pitts, have been meeting and, and, and talking and, and working together to come up with a, a plan, which I hate to say, we don't, we didn't have a plan before, before tonight. This here is a, a way to, to start down this road right here, now, one of the things I really strongly, and I told, I talked to Billy about this, uh, Thursday, Friday, even everybody, myself, Beatty, and we all met, if the council does adopt this, I think we got to come back and, and just like we have with dispatch, we got to come back with performance measures. Every couple of months, every three months, we come back and tell you, are we hitting our mark? If we're not hitting our mark, we need to change our, our program policy. And now, one of the things that, that, uh, I spoke to Chairman a little bit about this the other day, is I, I never want to come to you with a, with a problem unless I bring you a solution. Um, this is a tight budget here, uh, money was tied, balancing the budget without the tax increase was, was a little bit difficult. Um, should council won't implement this, I, I have, have identified a, a source of funding, uh, I got some good news for you tonight, guys. Um, one thing that we, we were able to accomplish last week is something that we didn't think we could do, but our landfill, we were able to move the, I don't know if anybody's ever been out to where we used to dump the brush, that big concrete structure we couldn't do anything with, we were able to knock it down last week, find, drag it out of the way. We've created about six to eight weeks of airspace. So, it's, they're closing in December, we've got the survey, and we're going to probably be somewhere late February, that's one generated by $47,910 that you guys can use, now, I'm not saying you have to use it here, but this is a source that if you did want to kind of invest in the Heygood Mill, to give us a chance to try, it's like we had, it's like we did at Mile Creek Park, give us the opportunity to try something to, to become more sustainable. Now, now, as we talked last week, eventually, we want to start bringing more people in, putting on more events, so, we got the Watermelon Festival, Jay made the touch on that, that's going to be huge this year. Um, it draws thousands of people a year, where is that from? These people are going to be coming to Heygood Mill this year, that's going to be a funding source that we never have had before. Hopefully, doing things like this, we can take that 22,000, we're looking for $22,500 this year, hopefully, as we start doing more and more, instead of looking for money, we start using the, the, the revenue source to help cover costs in other areas in the future.
So just clarification, because I'm just sticking to money, I'm not getting into anything but money at the moment, all that, that this plan is requiring of the county is 22,000?
Providing the ATAX is approved.
But, but, all that, all that this plan requires is, is 20, so right now, who does Mr. Crawford work for?
He works for me.
Currently, Mr., so, this new plan goes to place, Mr. Crawford no longer works for you?
No, 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 no. He still works for me.
But I would, I would have that conversation in.
Keep in mind, 22.5 is not even his salary.
That was my question, how many county boards are out there?
Two.
So, this is inaccurate.
This is the Fund 50, now, there's actually two different, this is, y'all been running the Fund 50.
He's part of the expense of running Heygood Mill.
That was my question.
There's two different parks at Heygood Mill, there's always been two different parks
at Heygood Mill, I'm going to find out who's yours. There's been the general fund side, there's been the Fund 50 side. Fund 50 side was a source that was built up.
Started back in the 90s. But, but I think, I think what Council and Bowers and I are seeing here is that we see Heygood Mill, all the expenses and all the revenue, doesn't matter where that expense comes from, whatever pocket it comes from, it's attached to that mill.
Yeah, that's right.
And to get an accurate picture of whether that mill is going to go forward or backward, we'd have to have all those numbers, but.
You've got all the numbers, you've got part of the year.
No, no, that's just.
That we're talking about on this piece of paper right here.
And my apologies that we didn't put that was specific to Fund 50.
But, but you understand, you're just, you're showing half the equation here, okay?
But, but, because I'm like, at this moment, if all it's going to take is 22,000, and Mike can say, we can get our liabilities taken care of if they're running it, I'm almost at the point to say, let's come up with 22,000 and let them do their thing, but it, that's not the real picture.
So, keep in mind, they're not running it now, that's, that's still a county project operation.
Well, everybody's answering to them, so.
But that's, again, again, I think this is, I want to be careful, I want us to get into this, I want us to get into that discussion in, um, executive session.
This goes, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What I do want to say is, I want y'all to understand something, we're not, and I want you to hear something, we're not about getting rid of Heygood Mill.
Not at all.
We don't want that to happen at all, and I don't know how the social media world got all wound up out of shape that we were trying to get rid of it, nobody wants that, because we believe in everything that you said, of the heritage, of the people, and of the hundreds of people that spend their time and efforts in volunteering and what they do. What we want to do is become more physically responsible, um, with how we're spending our money and how we're taking the money in, that's really it, it's not any, anything more complicated than that, but I want to assure you that as far as my opinion on Heygood Mill is, first, I didn't know it existed until I got elected, so, the marketing before that was non-existent or horrific or one, or both. The other is that now that I know that it exists, I want to do everything that I can to help make sure that it continues on for years and years and years to come. So, I think our conversation, though, getting into the logistics of personnel and the MOUs and the specific contracts need to happen in executive session.
And keep in mind what, what the general fund does, general fund funds a, a building, funds a director, the city's empty, it pretty much doesn't have, without something on the backside to do this, that's, that's kind of what, what we've brought to you tonight, and I think I understand what Chris is saying, I understand what Tracy's saying, with all of your stake, I really do, what, what this is, this is a first strike at trying to come up with a source to fund some of the additional. some of the additional amenities that goes along with the facility.
Right. I, I do have a question, a financial question. So if, if we're projecting thirty-three thousand people and we're only projecting admission of twelve thousand dollars, how much are we charging these people to come in?
That depends between the party fees or the individual and do we do.
So if you do thirty-three thousand people divided by four people per car divided by five dollars, that's still forty thousand.
And those numbers are only a third Saturdays, or, or, that's a yearly, not a third Saturday.
So if you go to, I guess that's what I'm getting at, because you've got projections of income of twelve thousand dollars.
All these people that I talked about earlier that come use this site, thirty-three thousand people, visitors to this site throughout the year. It's not just every third Saturday, one day a month. This, this number is based on a year. We don't charge every day.
You're misunderstanding my question. I'm going to ask them about the past, I'm asking them about the future.
We don't charge every day.
So you're, so the, the plan on admission is to charge just on third Saturdays?
That's all we ever have to.
Okay, I, I just wanted to know what the plan was.
Do we charge for field trips and things?
There's a field trip charge that we're starting to get in, if they want to do the hands-on type field trip.
And there's five thousand listed on that. That's what I was, I was trying to figure out the math, that's all.
My, my understanding that there's been some misunderstanding or not understanding the financial part of the county. So Billy, I know you, you've had some conversations with Gerald. Do you understand exactly what they've been talking to you, Ralph and them about the financial part?
That's what we're trying to fix, sir.
Do you understand it?
No, not really.
Well, if you sit down, listen, listen, if you sit down with them over that many times, then my question is, why don't you understand it?
We do understand it, but it's.
Because you don't like it.
It's, it's, it's not that we don't understand it, we don't feel that it's a fair calculation of a way to.
So we do understand it.
We do understand it, we're trying to just fix that we don't feel that it's a sustainable plan.
Any other questions before we?
Because you told me to stop.
Well, because I want to get into the thing.
Because I didn't have questions.
Go ahead, what?
I'll wait.
Okay. Y'all tell us what you want, what you, any other questions?
Contract personnel.
Okay, I like this stuff. I have that stuff here.
And I, and I love the plans for all the, the activities and stuff. You haven't, these are plans going forward, you haven't done them in the past.
This is a plan for, to, yeah, we have been doing this in the past, some of these things, but this is our plan for the offset calls for fiscal year 2020.
I'm just saying, you haven't done all these things in the past, these are for the future. Because Easter egg hunt, you didn't do, right?
Correct.
The, the field trips we've done, the rental things we just started doing, most of these things that are in here, we've had for at least a couple of months or more.
Okay.
So, yeah, and, and these we just found.
You said the rental things, what are the rental things that we're doing?
Those.
Jay, what are the rental, Jay, what are the rental things we're doing?
Some of the things we're talking about doing are how we're going to rent out the pavilion, the, the new pavilion that we're finishing up, whether we use it for wedding receptions, how we're going to use that building, market.
Kind of like we're renting out the pack, same concept.
That, that's right.
So let me, let me ask you a question there. Let's say you do rental, a lot of rentals, where does that money go?
We'll probably go back to the general fund.
Okay, I'm just asking, how, how do, some of that, is going to be a split in it with the foundation, general fund, I, I don't know.
That's undecided. That's a good question, because I think.
Right, what we're going to do right now, what they're recommending based on this plan right here is, is they've got a budget for revenues and expenses and as, as revenues comes in, it goes to offset expenses that's going out. Am I reading that right?
So, okay, so I'm, I'm, I don't want to, I didn't want to keep us extremely late tonight, but what else is it that you want to talk about?
We actually got, I know you want to go into executive session, a couple of personnel issues. Fire fee increases, the only district that we've recommended as of right now, fire fee increase for is Crossville. We talked about it last week, Councilman Hudson's, Councilman Hudson's district, they have a fire truck that's got, it's twenty-three years old, I think, got a blown engine.
I know there were questions, do y'all, y'all have any other questions about it or?
Ken, I, I have a question. So in all of our, and I think I can talk about this because it's budget, right? So Ken's not here to stop me.
He takes it though.
Is he? I know. Ghosted for days, but anywhere in any discussion we talked about, have we talked about taxing In any of the budget conversations that we've had?
I hear right, I hear right, we're going to cheat.
Have we, have we talked about taxing lawnmowers?
No.
And if we were to tax lawnmowers, is there a way to even do that?
You have to raise your own bid.
No, that was, I, I got to talk about.
So that was a, a miscommunication that got out there somewhere, kind of like the desire to shut down the mill and this, that and the other.
Arm equipment.
Arm equipment, ATVs.
That's the first I've heard of that.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. Okay, I just wanted to clarify, and I hope this would be a great time for me to clarify, this Crossville fire fee is not tacking on to lawnmowers.
A lot more. And that's a little different, that's a call question.
We don't do that, we do that big.
Now, there, there is, there is a couple fire districts that we may want to go into executive and talk about, and one of them is that personnel.
Yeah, you got, I've got that on you.
And we've got another one that wants to talk about a full-time, part-time chief scenario setup, whatever the case may be. We've also got personnel at the Sheriff's Department that, that you guys want to talk about, so those are the big ticket items.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss.